We're gonna call to order the Tuesday, September 17th, meeting of the Corder Madera Town Council. All right, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Casissa.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Vice Mayor Avasio.
Here.
Mayor Beckman.
Here. Thank you. Please join me in the salute to the flag.
Hi, pleasure to be here. To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic where we do say, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Now, we're gonna have open time for public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public who have, uh, who'd like to comment on any items that are not on tonight's agenda. To do so, members of the public will be given three minutes apiece. We'll start with in-person public comment, and then we'll also take public comment from anyone who's joining us via Zoom and would like to speak. Um, so with that, we'll ask our first speaker to come up, and we'll have three minutes on the clock. Thank you.
Kevin Bukata, proud resident of Corder Madera, live up on Alta Way, wanted to raise the issue of the fact that Alta Way has become traffic thoroughfare during commute hours. If any of you are familiar with that street, it's like so many of the lovely streets in this town, uh, you know, about 12 feet wide, impassable, two cars can't pass in most sections. Um, and it gets to the point that more than 100, sometimes close to 200 cars come through that street during commute hours, say between 3:00 and 5:00. Many members of the city have been helpful in putting together a traffic study that sort of gave us those specific numbers. Um, my concern is that, I mean, it makes it such that I can't have my children walk to school from our house. Um, for the folks that are walking dogs, I love to see how many folks use that as sort of a connection point between the trails and the paths up there on bicycles and on cars, but I cringe seeing the cars come around those narrow blind, blind turns. And so I'm brainstorming and seeking any ideas on how we can discourage through traffic, because it gets to the point that, uh, at rush hour, there's sort of three ways to get through Corder Madera. 101, uh, Corder Madera Avenue, or to cut through that direction. And it doesn't just affect folks on Alta Way, it is that traffic has to feed through Chapman Drive, and then ultimately through Sausalito. I know today's a bit of an outlier, but the traffic on Sausalito is backed up through Guena Vista right now. And, and just those are not streets that are realistic to handle that level of traffic. I recognize that in the extreme case, but yeah, usually one day a week, it gets, it gets stop and go on. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kevin. And we'll invite, um, if there's anyone else who'd like to give in-person public comment, please come on up. Good to see you, Lucinda.
Nice to see you. Lucinda Smith, I live on Alta Way, and I echo all of the comments that Kevin just gave forth. And I'll add some more of my own. The town needs to do something. This, I have lived on Alta Way for 52 years, and it has only gotten worse, worse, not only because of traffic that would normally do it, but because Waze has become an issue. Apparently, it's very user-friendly. People can put it on, can take it off. I don't know if the traffic takes it off, but it's a nightmare for those of us who live up there. And the other thing is, I can attest to several accidents that have taken place because of this windy road, blind corners. There's one woman that comes around, and she honks her horn at every blind corner. Good for her. She's telling people, it's kind of annoying for those that live on the blind curve, but at least she's telling people, here I come. People go too fast. There is an advisory of 20 miles an hour. That is insufficient. It should be more like 10. If I had my way, it'd be five, but let's go with 10. The other thing is, is that it's supposed to be local traffic or local access only. That's not adhered to by anybody, and unfortunately, it's not enforced. No big trucks. Trucks come along there all the time. Some have even gotten stuck and required the police to come up and help them get unstuck. So there is a problem, and the town needs to address it. Kevin's children, we have new families up there that have children. They're all young. They have right to be safe. I walk my dog. I have the right to be safe. People go too fast. There is obviously something that has to be done, and we would suggest putting in bumps, speed bumps, several of them. And there, I'm sure the town has other options. But the last time we tried to put in speed bumps, they were worried about accidents, because people would be going too fast. Well, they're going too fast, they lose control. It's happened before without the speed bumps, so I don't know what it would be with speed bumps, but at least it would help us. So I offer that as being a suggestion. Uh, one neighbor I talked to this afternoon was in support of the speed bumps as well. I think that was one of the ideas that Kevin had in his memo to RJ. And I know you've been involved as to Lee, Eli. So thank you very much for listening to me. Please do something for us. We're deserving of it.
Thank you very much, Lucinda. Would anyone else like to make in-person public comment? Thank you. Come on up.
Hi, Anne Randolph, been living on Alta Way, but I'm in the corner of Alta and Sausalito. Uh, and I support my neighbors in the fact that it is too fast. The 20 is not, it needs to be to 10. And I have, right on Alta Way and Sausalito, there is a caution sign. It should be a stop sign or something, but, um, for people to pause. But when there's traffic like this, it's like, uh, a train of one after the another, just follow each other. They don't pause. And I have to go out, and there are times when I have to wait 10 or 15 minutes in order to get out of my driveway, because I keep on going fast around that corner. There have been accidents. I was away, my tree, my oleanders, a couple have been, have been taken out, because the road is very narrow. And also, my, uh, Buckeye, uh, has been hit by a car, too, and it's gonna go. Um, so, and the horn lady, I was laughing when Lucinda was telling me, but it's true. But even I have had to, when, when the horn lady comes by, I'm almost happy, because she drives so fast, she's telling people that she's coming. And I'm like, well, now I have to do the horn also, to just make sure that she doesn't, uh, plow into me. So I'm just supportive that there needs to be something, because with the Waze problem with this traffic like today, there is definitely something has to be done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else with us in person tonight who would like to make public comment on any items not on tonight's agenda? And seeing none, we'll turn to Zoom and email. Lorena, do we have any hands up via Zoom or public comment emails that have come in?
We did receive, um, an email public comment, um, over the weekend, which was added to the website and shared with council. Um, aside from that one, we didn't receive any additional comments via email, and there are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, thank you very much. So with that, we'll thank, um, all the members of the public for their public comment. Uh, we're gonna ask, uh, Public Works to continue, uh, working with, uh, these residents, and hopefully we can, uh, arrive at a solution on this issue. Um, we'll move on to item three on tonight's agenda, which is presentations. Our first presentation, 3A, is gonna be a recognition of our outgoing Parks and Rec Commissioner, uh, Sarah Elson, and we're recognizing her for eight years of service, uh, on the Parks and Rec Commission. And we have a proclamation for you, uh, that I would love to read to you, um, right now. So this is a, a Town of Corder Madera proclamation commending Sarah Elson for eight years of service to the community on the Parks and Recreation Commission. The proclamation says, "Whereas Sarah Elson was appointed to the Parks and Recreation Commission in 2016, and reappointed in 2018, 2020, and 2022, thus serving on the commission for a total of eight years. And whereas during her tenure on the commission, Sarah provided valuable guidance, insight, and leadership regarding key issues and initiatives related to parks and rec facilities and programming for the Corder Madera community. And whereas Sarah played a strong role in planning, evaluating, and implementing numerous improvements to parks and recreation programming, events, and infrastructure. And whereas throughout her years of service, Sarah consistently demonstrated her passion and commitment to serving the Corder Madera community in her role as a commissioner. And whereas she is particularly proud of her contributions to the successful development, approval, and completion of both the Parks and Recreation Facility's master plan and the new Town and Park restroom facility. And whereas Sarah has lived in Corder Madera with her husband Corbett and daughters Finley, Harper, and Dempsey since 2009, and while her service to the commission may have concluded, she will continue to be an active and involved member of our community, and has offered her continued support of the Parks and Recreation Department's programs and activities. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Eli Beckman, Mayor of the Town of Corder Madera, express sincere gratitude to Sarah Elson for her outstanding dedication and contributions to the Town of Corder Madera, and am proud to recognize Sarah for her work on the Parks and Recreation Commission for the past eight years." Thank you so much, Sarah.
Mayor Beckman, I would like to invite Sarah up to accept this bouquet and say a few words, and, um, her presence on the commission will be missed. She's been a level-headed, thoughtful, and participatory member of the commission for the past eight years. She's always had a thoughtful, um, approach to reviewing anything brought before the commission. Um, very big picture in, in her approach, and we've watched her, her children grow up in our programs, and, um, it's, it's been, it's been a good eight years, and she's.
Uh, thank you so much. This means a lot. Um, Fred was our fearless leader when I started, and I feel like we've gotten a lot done in eight years, and it's a good time for me to take a pause. Um, but I think it'll be a pause. I will find a way to come back and, and contribute more to the town at some point in the future. As all of you know, it's a, a great thing to be able to do. Um, and it's been a great experience, so thank you.
Thank you so much. Any council members want to share any words?
Yeah, I just want to thank Sarah, because I served your, I'm Park and Rec Commissioner, where I chaired that for, I think, three or four years with you. You were just really great, and I think you added a really good perspective, because you had younger kids that were coming in through that program. So again, I think that perspective really helped us a lot. You also went through the master plan, which was a really important part, I think, to lay a blueprint for the future. And then the other thing also, which may be kind of weird, we went through three Park and Rec directors, or at least you did. So again, I appreciate all your hard work, everything you did, and I'm sure you will be back at some point in time.
I think so.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. We are so grateful for your service. We're lucky to, to have had you, and we're, we appreciate that you're dedicated to continuing to be involved in the community, and I'd love to give you this proclamation. Alrighty, and with that, we're gonna move on to our second presentation here. That's item 3B on our agenda, which is a presentation by the Central Marin Police Authority Police Chief regarding current initiatives. And I will turn it over to Chief Norton, who's with us tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Beckman, and members of the council. Uh, we have a PowerPoint or deck getting ready to boot up. Um, so the, the town manager, Adam Wolf, asked me just to come and discuss, you know, some of the issues we're facing, and kind of gave me a carte blanche to talk tonight, which was a little weird for me, because I'm used to being kind of, hey, we need a presentation on this or on this. And, um, so what I did is I, I'll start off, the first one's just kind of a softball, which is, I wanted to just talk about our new website, but then I was gonna focus on what's, what do I feel is the biggest internal challenge we're facing? Um, what is the thing we hear the most from our constituents, and what do I feel is actually, um, the biggest issue in terms of, of crime we're facing? So we'll hit on those three. I'll go kind of high levels, so I'm not here talking for an hour and a half, which I easily could on these three issues, but if you wanted to, to go ahead. So first off, this, um, this doesn't seem like a big deal, and this wasn't a huge issue, but I'm happy with it. We hadn't updated our website in about 10 years, and it was so old, it didn't really work on cell phones. And it was a complaint. I got a lot of people being frustrated with it, not being able to find documents, broken links, all of that. And we, you know, it just had gotten really stale. Um, so what we did is, we spent a few months, and we completely tore it from the, down to the studs and rebuilt it, if you want to pull up our website, Lauren. And, um, it looks a lot prettier, obviously, but, um, in addition to that, it's just a, it's a modern website now. And, uh, oh, don't you tell, that was, that's you. That's not our website. Okay. So, um, one thing we have on there is it's a clear direction to like where the police council is in all our agendas and items, and also to a transparency portal where in, that's okay if you can't get it to come up. So the transparency portal is kind of one-stop shopping, where if you click on it, you can see all our budgets for the last five years, all our, um, crime and traffic statistics, anything you can kind of imagine, and you can even really drill into it and find our policies, our training and all of that, which was really big in the last few years. So I am happy with that. And, uh, feel free to check it out, centralmarinpolice.org. It's okay if it's not working, Lauren. That's okay. Okay. If you want to just go back to the PowerPoint, that'll be.
We'll also check it out, um, on our own time. And you said it's centralmarinpolice.org, is that correct?
Yeah.
Perfect.
And so, for instance, we'll be talking about, um, one of the issues I'll talk about is e-bikes tonight. And, um, you know, we just created a, a page with a few little items on there, just to really educate people on what are e-bikes and what are actually mopeds and motorcycles, which I'll get to, is most of what we're, we're seeing nowadays. So yeah, you can just click past them. There you go. So internally, the biggest thing we've been facing for the last two to three years is staffing. And, um, there you go. Um, so we've really struggled with not only retention the last few years, but recruitment as well. Um, prior to the last two or three years, whenever someone left to maybe make more money or go to another county, it was inconvenient, but we were able to recruit and bring people in. And what we've seen over the last few years for various factors is, um, we've really been struggling to bring people in, so it's been kind of a slow bleed at our department. Um, there's a lot of factors to this. One of the big ones was just pay. We weren't very competitive in the county. And the county as a whole, when you compare it to the Bay Area, is one of the least competitive law enforcement markets, which is problematic when it's one of the most expensive places to, to live. Whereas when I've talked to school superintendents, um, they pay some of the best in the, in the Bay Area, which makes sense. Um, so we struggled with that. Um, the cost of living is one thing. We have very few officers, um, living in the county, as do all the police departments here, which leads to very long commutes. I've lived in Petaluma for 22 years. It's not the worst commute, but my new officers are commuting from Fairfield, Vacaville, um, North Santa Rosa, and they're pretty brutal commutes, to be honest with you. And then the other thing we didn't really think about much is, we have no name recognition outside of Corder Madera, Larkspur, San and Salmo. And I encounter a lot of residents who just don't even understand that we don't work for Ross, or we're not part of Fairfax, or what is Central Marin Police? So to give you a, a snapshot of our staffing challenges, um, so I'll explain this chart to you. We basically are budgeted to 42 officers, sworn personnel. I am one of those, even though I won't drive a black and white around. I do actually have been making some stops on e-bikes, but, in my unmarked, but, um, generally, I'm not out there handling calls and doing routine traffic enforcement. So we're budgeted for 42. The way we're set up is, um, if you look into our cars, generally, you'll just see one person. We're budgeted, and, and the way we're set up is to have, like most suburbs are, one officer per car. In the city, you usually see people double up. If you see us doubled up, that means one of those officers is actually on training and not clear to go on their own. So when we hire somebody, if we're not lucky enough to get a lateral, which is someone with police experience from another agency, um, let's say, Mayor, you decided you wanted to be a police officer, and we're, we're, you know, we have openings. So you'd come in and interview, we'd, we'd bring you in right away, we'd interview you, we'd send you home with a packet, uh, and start your background. The background at a minimum takes two to three months, because we have to dig into everything in your past. We have to send you to a full-day psychological appointment, two days of medical, it's this whole process. If you meet all these thresholds that are set by the state, we can hire you, and then we would send you to the next police academy that's available. Um, police academies are generally only offered in January and July each year, and the academy takes about six months. So you can see, we're almost getting close to maybe a year. Let's say it's, we're lucky and it's only nine months. You would graduate, and then you'd start our field training program. That takes four to six months. That's where you're learning on the job. And when all that's said and done, we let you, I let you essentially go off on your own, and I trust you to go be a police officer in our town. So when someone gives us two weeks' notice or a month, we start the process, and it, it takes well over a year. So what's happened is, we've had people leaving over the last few years for those reasons I've said, but we haven't been getting many people apply. And those that we've been getting applying haven't made it through the background, or haven't made it through the academy, or haven't made it through the field training. So that's left us very short-staffed. And so currently, we have, uh, I, I should have checked this out beforehand. Now I know I need glasses. Um, we have eight vacancies, which means we're hiring for eight new officers. When you have 42 sworn, that's a good chunk of your workforce. In addition, we have three people right now at the academy, and we have another two on FTO, and we have two out with significant, um, injuries. So when you think of, we're staffed up to have 42 officers, I think that's 15 or 16 spots that we technically don't have, which is about a third. Um, so what does that, what does that mean? We have to triage, right? And the most important thing is for those dynamic crimes, for life-saving and all of that. So we have to make sure we always have the officers in your town to respond to the emergencies. So it means we have to fold our specialties into patrol to make sure we have that staff to make up for those 14 spots. So when we're fully staffed, we have a traffic supervisor and three traffic officers, and all they do during the day is pull people over and write tickets and take accidents. We have nobody in traffic right now. They're folded into patrol. We normally have a sergeant and, um, three detectives. One of our detectives is now folded into patrol. Our school resource officer is folded into patrol. Our, um, special investigations unit detective, which is a county task force that does a lot of narcotics buys and things, they're folded into patrol. And, um, and in addition, we have a computer crimes task force officer that works Bay Area-wide. They're in patrol. And then in addition to that, we also have, if you can look there and it says patrol A, B, C, D, those are our different shifts, since we have to work 12-hour shifts seven days a week. A and C are your two day shifts, and B and D are your two night shifts, and they opposite each other. So if you look at like A and C, your day shift, normally, when we're staffed up, we would have seven officers, you know, two, one, two supervisors and five officers, but we're running basically, which is four officers now, um, which leaves us pretty lean. It leaves us with a supervisor and one officer in each of our towns, and if no one's on vacation and no one's sick, we have one other officer that can float around. So, um, that's what keeps me up at night more than anything, is stopping this bleed and turning the ship around. And we've been working at this hard with the managers, with human resources, and myself for a few years, and we haven't gained much traction until I think within the last two or three months, we might have finally stopped the bleeding, and we're turning it around. If you go to the next slide. One of the big ones, obviously, for retention and bringing people in, was a new contract was entered into in July, which brings us into a competitive nature in the county. So we're on like a, a level playing field now, at least among Marin County. We've also started, um, offering, uh, $30,000 hiring bonuses for people who have been to the academy, which is a big deal, because that shaves at least six months off this whole process. And we've had some luck. We've bought three people in since we started doing that about a year ago. And then the, the most recent one we did about a month ago, that's really reaping the biggest rewards, is we started using a company called All-Star Talent, um, to assist with marketing and recruiting. We realized early on that we didn't have the financial resources to put up billboards or do radio ads and kind of that old-fashioned. So, um, we looked around, yeah, we just kind of realized we have to work smarter, not harder. And this company, for a much lower cost, probably about an eighth of what we would have had to pay for a decent marketing campaign, um, is using, I don't know the exactly how it works, but it's kind of like using cookies, and it uses most of the Facebook platform. So if you're looking at police jobs, or you've typed in, you know, police jobs or any of that, you start getting those pop-up ads on Instagram and on Facebook and on Indeed. And, um, since we started that, I would say in the last three weeks, we've had more applications than we've had in two years. So we have like a dearth of applications now, which is great, and we're working through all those interviews and trying to, everyone else is trying to hire these people, too, but it kind of got over that name recognition problem. Um, so we're very, um, hopeful to send a good chunk of people, hopefully four to six, to the academy that starts in January, and maybe pick up another two or four that have police experience, and possibly come mid-January, I could, I would be able to come back and say, we actually have no job openings. We're not all on the street, but we have no job openings, which is the first step. So, um, that's very promising for kind of the biggest challenge we're facing. Um, so those are some of like the pop-up ads that would, would come up. And there's a link, but I'm not gonna ask you to click on it. So, um, this is the one we hear about the most nowadays, which is e-bikes, and it kind of really, been hearing about it for about a, a year or two. Um, people were, it's kind of trickling in, I think, at the end of COVID, and then it just kind of exploded last year. And there was a lot of misinformation out there, and, uh, myself included, didn't really grasp it until probably last spring. And I think there's still some communities that are still struggling to kind of understand what's going on and what's legal and what's not. So I always hear there's all this dangerous and illegal e-bike riding, and there's been a huge increase in e-bike injuries. So first off, this is the one thing I love to, to talk about, is e-bikes are not the problem. E-bikes are not causing any of this. What people are seeing and getting upset with, and what are these accidents happening in our town, they're not on e-bikes. I own a class-one e-bike. Um, what you're seeing is electric motorcycles, electric mopeds, and electric minibikes, all of which are not street legal. That's what these minors are riding that are crashing and doing wheelies and stuff. I'm not sure we've, we may have had one or two in the last three years of an actual legal e-bike that's gotten in an accident. It involved a minor. We have had some, some people that were a little older getting some accidents. Um, so if you go to the next slide. Oh, real quick, I, you've probably heard this before, but basically, to ride on a sidewalk or street, depending on the town, but in the state of California, uh, there's, with a motor, there has to be like an exception to allow it, right? So we allow cars on the street, but you have to get a driver's license, you have to register your car. We allow motorcycles, but you have to register it, and you have to get a motorcycle license. Um, bicycles, a traditional bicycle has no motor. That's allowed to ride on the street with its own certain rules and all this. But then what happened in the last five years is you've had a blow up of, um, electric scooters, electric skateboards, electric motorcycles, you know, e-bikes and all of this, and none of them are actually legal to be ridden on the street, because the street tells you what can be ridden. So about seven years ago, California said, you know what? We like this idea of an electric e-bike. It's gonna be good for the environment, it's good for traffic flow and commute, so we're gonna allow e-bikes, but in very limited circumstances. So they came out with this law, and, um, they said, they defined what an e-bike was, and these are the only ones that are allowed to be driven on the street that aren't registered with the DMV. They have to have fully operated, operable pedals, which means they have to pedal, and their electric motor cannot be able to output more than 750 watts, which is about one horsepower, to give you some perspective on that. And then they broke it into three classes, and they said a class-one electric bike is, uh, which if you, most of the people that like go mountain biking, they'll, they'll buy one. It has no throttle, but it does have the ability to give you power up to 20 miles an hour. But if you hit 20 miles an hour, it's supposed to shut the power. And then, yeah, you could coast or whatever faster. A class-two, which is, you know, obviously more popular with kids and maybe older people, is, it, it also cannot go faster than 20, but it has a throttle in addition to the, to the, um, pedals. So you can just push a button or crank the grip, but it has to shut down after 20. It still can't be over 750 watts, or it is not by definition an e-bike. And then a class-three, it requires a helmet, it still has to be 750 watts, but, um, no throttle, but with pedal assist, you can go up to 28 miles an hour. So with all that in mind, what we're seeing are basically these minors, some of the older kids riding the ones on the left, the middle school and kind of your freshmen in high school riding the ones on the right, ones that look like an old 70s moped. Neither of those are e-bikes. Neither of those are street legal. We figured this out in the spring. We did a bunch of education. We wrote two, um, sets of emails to every parent in our jurisdiction that had a child attending a school, educated them on this, and then, um, I'll just break it down. The one on the left's a motorcycle, it has no pedals. And those usually can go about thirty five, forty miles an hour. There's nothing about that. That's an e-bike. It's just a motorcycle. It looks like one too, if you look at it. On the right, those do have pedals, but that company in particular boasts on its website that it goes up well over seven hundred and fifty watts. Some of their models go up to four thousand watts, which is about maybe a little less than that, about three horsepower. And we routinely pace and shoot those with radar going thirty five, thirty eight miles an hour. So by their definition, they're not e-bikes. Those are what's causing the accidents with students. So what we did over this, we did the education in the spring. Over the summer, we worked closely with the main large schools in our jurisdiction, we're having the most issues, which is our two high schools, which is Redwood and Archie and our middle school, which is Hall, and we assisted Fairfax with White Hill. And the reason is it's relevant to Corder Madera because the Corder Madera kids generally go to Hall and Redwood, right? And we have a lot of San Antonio kids that go to White Hill in addition to Archie. So the schools agreed they had an issue. We, we did some tours of the school. We saw there was thirty, fifty of these bikes on campus at the end of the school year. And they, their superintendents agreed they're going to not allow those on campus starting this year. It's been a little bit of a work in progress. We're still working through Redwood a little bit right now. But we've had really good success with Archie and Hall so far. Doing a tour of Archie about three weeks into the school year, we located five Super Seventy Threes and no motorcycles, which last year would have probably been about fifty of those bikes. Some of the parents are upset that you teach them what's going on. They understand it. There's really not much you can do because they're not legal. And then we've also done a lot of using a, an Office of Traffic Safety grant, which allows for some overtime. We've been applying that these first few weeks to bring in officers on their days off to supplement kind of the bare bones officers we have and do some actual enforcement. And we are cracking down pretty hard. We are issuing a lot of citations in some instances. If it's one of the motorcycles or if the kids choose not to stop and try to run from us, we've actually been towing them. And just like you would a vehicle. Just kind of doing everything we can. I'm not sure if it's been noticeable to the public yet during the school days and lunches, but we've noticed a huge improvement from our officers out there and even me just looking out the window. And then we're going to kind of see as good as we can get this in about a month or two. And then that will probably be an issue for the police council is like, how do you, are we good? Or because if we're going to do more, we're going to need probably some real draconian laws, you know, beyond what we have right now. But what we have right now is enough to actually, I think, solve this issue. But anyways, that's e-bikes. I'll move on to the next thing. I'm sure there's some e-bike questions. Kind of the big crime issue we have because e-bikes, it's a nuisance and yes, they're running through stop signs, but it's not like a major crime. It's more of a nuisance issue and a traffic issue. So retail theft though, has increased drastically since 2020. Kind of after COVID, I don't know if everyone remembers, it was a big media cycle. We weren't immune from any of that. We had a lot of those same issues at our shopping centers in Larkspur and Corder Madera. They just didn't get, there wasn't really like the sexy video, so they didn't end up on CNN. We've also had a lot of prosecution and sentencing challenges, even though we're arresting people. The sentencing seems to be much less than it used to be. It's just kind of the political winds changed, for lack of a better term, between the judges and the prosecutors. And we're seeing much bigger uptake in large retail theft rings, which used to just maybe originate in one part of the Bay Area and they'd kind of do the, the loop and go around the bay and hit the stores. They're kind of like, they're almost West Coast now. We have some people we arrest that are linked to Arizona and Washington and they're kind of just traveling the whole Western US and that's really blown up as well. The cases we're solving nowadays, I've been mainly solved by using other jurisdictions, ALPR cameras, which are license plate readers. And our detectives are able to call another detective and ask them to run a plate. And then working through them helped kind of link it, get all this. From that, we realized what a great tool this was. We've had it for many years in Larkspur, but it died a few years ago and we didn't replace it. But we started looking into this new technology and what we have is in going in in a few weeks, we'll have license plate readers. About eight of them throughout our three jurisdictions centered around the retail shopping centers. And if you want to go ahead, the next slide. Not only do they help with prevention of retail theft, so if we have, let's say someone go in and rob the Apple store, right? Four people go in and we get a plate, but the plate doesn't really provide us any leads because it was cold plated or it was a salvage car. We can still type that plate in as a suspect vehicle wanted in a retail theft. And if it, if it pings on any of those cameras, it just alerts the agency. It doesn't mean they're under arrest. It doesn't mean any of that. But it gives you a heads up, which is really beneficial to get that early warning that, hey, a car that's a suspect in a retail theft maybe is just entered the parking lot of one of your shopping centers. Super helpful with that, super helpful with solving the crimes and helping us be proactive. But it also can be very helpful for like missing and endangered people or amber alerts and all that. By putting up cameras, we'll get alerts when those cars come through town and we can assist with that. But yeah, like I said, we have had license plate reader cameras out on East Sir Francis Street for many years until they died a few years ago. In Marin, there's already many agencies using the same company. Marin County Sheriff has a bunch of them, Sam Rafael Police, Novato Police. And then Sausalito and Tiburon, I believe, have just a different company, but they all kind of interact together. And then one of the things was we realized, you know, there is a cost to this and money is tight. So what I asked the managers and got approval is, hey, what if I could get these cameras up at no cost to the city? Because I have a feeling there's some, some donors, including, you know, shopping centers that might be interested in paying for this because they're the major benefactor. So we've been able to so far get funding for two years worth kind of a pilot program. Basically at no cost to central money police budget. Want to go to the next one? I did, if you're really curious about this on our website, and I swear it works. I did a whole staff report and presentation on this at our last police council meeting. So there's a lot of material on that, but I was going to hit the, the high level. So flock is the ALPR camera. As you can see, it takes an image of the rear of the car. So you catch the plate. It uses, you know, it's AI technology to tell you the color and if it knows the make and model as well. As you can see, it has no idea who's in the car, who's driving it. It's not facial recognition. It doesn't say how fast they're going or if they ran a stop sign. It's just gathering license plate data and make and model, and then it'll run it through the same computer that we have when we make a traffic stop and alert us if that's a car wanted in a homicide, let's say out of the South Bay or it's a stolen car out of the East Bay, or it was the same car that was, you know, spotted robbing one of our stores in Corder Madera three weeks ago. And then it'll alert the officers and our dispatchers and we'll go from there. So we kind of hit on this already. You know, like I said, it's not tied to personal information. It doesn't take photos of people. It's not facial recognition. It is only held for thirty days and then it automatically deletes. And even though it's cloud stored through a company, we own that data. So no one else can get that data without, you know, basically me releasing it. So if some weird thing politically was happening in another state and they wanted that, they're not going to get it. If, you know, the federal government wanted it, they're not getting it without me releasing it. So it's one hundred percent not to be used for immigration or there's, you know, fear of, you know, prohibiting abortions from other states or none of that's going to happen. Kind of hit on that already. Yeah, I think it's kind of redundant. So like I said, from our August eighth police council meeting, there is more info there. If you're, if you're curious or any of the members of the public are, that's it. That's the last one. I'm not sure if you had any questions about any of that. I don't know if that was helpful or worth your time.
If I can, yeah, if I can, I, you know, and I just, I think Chief Norton's sort of underselling his leadership role, especially on the e-bike issue. He's really taken this, this effort and sort of strategy about how to address it, I think throughout the county and others have now latched on. We've obviously had the letter in front of the council at the, the last council meeting in terms of a letter to the DA. So there's many different tacks that are being led by Chief Norton on that issue. And I think it was also just a good opportunity to highlight, yes, there are challenges internally, the main one externally as well. And I think Chief's just, it, it's a good, was a good time to, to sort of talk about all the, the proactive work that is being done to try to address these things and just inform you and I think our community of, of those major efforts. There's obviously a ton of other things that are chief's and its officers are tackling on a daily basis, but high level. Just getting the information out there. So I really appreciate you coming in and sharing that with, with the town council as a whole. And obviously this is being addressed and discussed at the town police council meetings on the quarterly schedule that they have.
Thank you. And I will add that, you know, the, the council hears from advocates for e-bike safety a lot. And one thing that I have personally heard from these advocates is that you and the, and the CNPA force are standing out in your leadership on this issue. So your efforts are not going unseen or unappreciated. So thank you. Thanks for your time. That was a really helpful update. We're going to take questions and comments from the council and then we'll open it up to public comment. If there's any questions or comments from members of the public who'd like to start us off at the council.
Sure. You talked about enforcement of retail crime. It's, I, I think I saw articles, I didn't delve into it, but the, the governor has kind of created new legislation and laws to help with some of that. Do you think that that might help you moving forward? Are you aware of that and how we're going to implement this? You know, it's kind of a, it's a slight rollback to a proposition from many years ago. And I think it's helpful. There's also a major, a proposition coming on the ballot. It's a little more stronger. So there's some politicking going on at the state level. But regardless, any, anything's better than.
But you think in, in general, for the types of things that we're seeing in our local community, so supporting that could help with some of these local issues or?
I mean, Corder Madera, let's be honest, it's, it's a great community. And one of the things it's very fortunate to have is a very strong retail base and retail tax. And I think, you know, San Francisco can attest to this. It's important to keep your retailers happy in, in town and doing good business. So I would be very supportive as a chief or any member of Corder Madera, if a resident to support strong, you know, retail theft laws.
Excellent. Thank you.
And just on that point, I think Chief has reached out to our Chamber of Commerce and President in that, in this effort as well. And they're very supportive.
They've been very helpful.
Helpful.
Great. Thank you, Rosa.
Thank you for that presentation. It's very interesting and enlightening. And congratulations on addressing successfully your recruitment challenges. I have a question about the fact that a lot of the applicants don't pass the background. And I was wondering, is there anything in the background that is specifically that we might think is a very small thing, but is a big thing in, for becoming a police officer that may be tripping?
Yeah, it's, you know, their, their state mandates. All of this is overseen by police officers standing at the training post. And we have to adhere by that. I'm not going to say we're, we're loosey goosey by any means, but I think we're pretty progressive in what we allow. And, you know, as the years have gone by, I think, you know, when I first started, you know, twenty three years ago, if you had tried marijuana once, it was a big deal and you might not even get hired, you know? And we're definitely well beyond that. And I, you know, we're, we're constantly looking at things and but there's, there's certain things that are just, you know, there's, there's absolute no's like, I've been convicted of a felony. Well, you'll, you'll never be a police officer. You know, I don't know what to tell you. But there's a lot of other things. I think a lot of what we're seeing, we're not failing a lot of people out during the backgrounds, I would say. Some of them don't pass the, the day long psychological barrage. It's kind of like this cookie cutter thing that the state puts out, that if you don't fit within there, you're not making it and we don't have any control over that. But there are some where, you know, we kind of have to rely on our, you know, I've been doing this for twenty four years. And when you see flags and you go, I remember us kind of falling for that eight years ago. And this candidate really showing that we should probably not go that way. I will say there's very few candidates that we pass on in background that end up getting employed as a police officer anywhere else. And we would know that because the first thing they would do is reach out to us and go, oh, we saw they applied there. What do you know? And, you know, so I think we're, we're doing good there. I think a lot of it is, you know, this is crazy. And then the raises for our officers were not nearly as high, but I was reading that over the last, I think, eighteen months nationwide, the average police officer salary went up like thirty eight percent. So that tells you how desperate like the whole country is. They're just kind of throwing money at the problem. And that may help, that may not, but I think there's just a lot of people who were just kind of urging to apply. So we have people who come in, some of them apply for a part-time parking enforcement job and we interview them and we're like, honestly, do you want to be a police officer? You'd be great. So we have picked up people that way. Kind of people are still short selling themselves to how it was really highly competitive ten, twenty years ago. And it's, it's much more attainable now. So I think it's kind of neat because we're definitely getting a more, you know, diverse economical, you know, whether you look at the economics or the, or race, our department's becoming rapidly way more diverse over the last five years. It's probably the only good thing that came out of losing so many people. But I think that's a really good thing for all different backgrounds.
And I had one more question about the license plate readers. So how is it determined which license plate you're looking at? What I mean is a lot of cars could be leaving the shopping center at the same time. And is it because someone actually sees the merchandise going into a particular car and they're looking for that particular license plate?
It'll, it'll read every license plate of every car that goes by. So forty thousand cars go by, it reads them. And then we only get alerted if the, the license plate is flagged. So it's flagged because it's a stolen car or it's a suspect in a crime. We'll get alerted to that. The other thing is it's gathering data. So we could have a, a car leave our jurisdiction. And let's say it's that our officer is working overtime detail, which Apple pays for. We have a lot of cars that look like maybe they were going to break into Apple and they see us and go off. It's helpful. And then they go down to the peninsula and they, they rob an Apple store. They'll be able to tell that that car actually came through our jurisdiction too. It's very helpful for us for prosecution and for tracking. And like I said, it, it really helps us link because we know they're committing crimes throughout the whole state and it really helps us link these together. I mean, I'll be honest, if you go into the Apple store and take five phones, it's a felony, but are you really going to get a big sentence in Marin County? Probably not, you know? Might do a little time in jail, maybe. But if we can show that that same car in person and we link it across the state, now one district attorney will take that and go, hey, we have fifty five counts left. That's a big deal. And that's where we're seeing some actual progress in this.
Okay, thank you. That clarifies it.
Excuse me.
Everybody makes sense.
Actually sit as vice chair on the police council. So I have a lot of more information. But I appreciate all the work that you're doing, your officers. I think you've truly instilled like a culture of community policing from the top all the way down to the officers. So I appreciate that. On the e-bikes, you mentioned citations. What kind of citations is that? No driver's license speeding or is it just everything?
It can be a little bit of everything. You know, a lot of it is just how cooperative are the, are the kids we're dealing with, you know, to be honest with you. Generally, I kind of, if it's one of those electric motorcycles, I've kind of told my officers, if you can, I'd like that towed. Because those are incredibly dangerous and it's, it's no different than just a dirt bike ripping down forty miles an hour downtown. On the Super Seventy Threes, where you're getting more into the technicality of it, they can, you know, tow those, but generally we're doing more just a citation. You know, it can range from, they can get a ticket just for not wearing a helmet if our officer's being really nice. A lot of what we're getting is the kid in the back has no helmet, the kid in the front has a helmet and they're going thirty five miles an hour. So I'm generally, we're, we're citing them for twelve five hundred, which is an unlicensed driver, which is what we would cite because like to ride a, a moped, you need a license as well. And essentially those are mopeds or minibikes, which require that. Sometimes some of our officers are citing for a non-registered vehicle, but most aren't. And then the big thing is they're almost all minors who are pulling over. We're calling parents if we can get ahold of them, explaining exactly what's going on, explaining this, this is not to be on the street or sidewalk again. If it is, we will tow it next time and trying to get parental compliance, which sometimes is working with some parents, some, sometimes not. So.
Thanks. And then I know it's probably an ongoing investigation. I know there was the incident last week with the school district. last week with the school district. I don't know if you can just, and I think the school district did a really good job by just automatically shutting down schools immediately. But it probably put a strain on central police because you actually had to cover two high schools, right? Archie Williams and also Redwood.
Actually four, because the two small ones are San Andreas and Tamascall too. So yeah, I have a really good relationship with the superintendent. She called me before school started and we, we game plan that real quick. And I knew, you know, we talked and I'm like, it's a lot easier to cancel school for the day when you have a bomb threat than to have all the kids go there. And I have a 20 year old. So she was in high school not that long ago. And I'd be upset if my kid went to school and there's a bomb threat, even if it probably is not credible. So yeah, it was, the schools were great. Basically assigned one of our officers to each school to make sure no one got there. Once it was locked down, we spent a few hours searching all the campuses till we felt it was clear. Then we let the faculty back. And then while that was going on, we actually kind of unrelated, received a notification that on Snapchat, someone had said there was going to be a shooting at a school in San Anselmo. So we worked with the FBI and figured out where that was coming from, you know, through their IP address and track some of that. And we were able to locate a, an Archie student who had made that threat and she was arrested for that.
Again, thanks for the quick response. And then just one, just one point of clarification to add on. On the license plate readers, I know that you came up with like a very detailed policy.
Yes.
When it can be used. So it's, and I think it was like five or six pages long, just super detailed.
The draft of that, it's still not finalized because we haven't gone live. That is in the, the police council report, if anyone's interested. Yeah, it's very specific on how it's not to be used for immigration, how we're not going to allow any agencies outside of the state of California to use it. I don't know if there's any merit to it, but there was some, some issues circling saying some of the the states and the other parts of the country that don't allow abortions, we're going to be looking into our cameras and tracking people and all that. They've, no one will be able to see any of our cameras. And it's actually when you go to run something, every time you have to type in why you're running it. And our policy is you have to link the case to it. So no one can just be like, I'm curious where that car's been now. You have to type that in and we'll be doing audits on that. And then personally, I'm allowing who can, who can see our cameras and who can't. And we're not allowing any federal agencies to see into our cameras or any agencies outside of the state. But we are sharing with all California law enforcement and sheriff's agencies, which is pretty much reciprocal. They're sharing with us as well.
Okay. Thanks. And just one last question. Any thought to using drones? I know SFPD is starting to use them now, not from a privacy issue, but just more, seems like it's more officer and public safety point of view.
Yeah, they're politically kind of a hot button issue. And I, maybe I'm just getting old and I didn't want to have such a big fight. We do have access to some other agencies in the county do have drones. So in an emergency, we can, we can use theirs. But yeah, we're always, we're always looking at that and taking the temperature of how our communities are with things like that.
Thanks.
Thank you, Fred and Pat.
Hey, two quickies. First, thank you so much for your report and for all your good work. You have a lot of fans out there. I'm always hearing about the great job that you're doing. Quick question first, do you have to be a citizen to be a police officer?
You did up until, I think it was a year ago. And now you just, you have to be, I'm going to mess this up. It's actually on our application, legally allowed to work in the United States.
So as long as they have a green card?
Yeah.
And do we get any applicants from?
We have, we have one current officer who is not a citizen, but is legally allowed to.
Good. I think getting that word out, you know, that the, the guidelines have changed could be helpful. Big question though, in this day of technology and all this wizardry that we have, what can we do to help out people who, for instance, Waze routes everybody through their hairpin turn neighborhood? All of a sudden, I've seen it out there. Is there something that Central Marin Police can do to work with these guys?
Town in the past, and I'm not sure if it was Waze or just Google and Apple, this was many years ago. Same issue came up and the town, I think attorney may have been involved, but wrote letters to the companies. You can do that. I'm not sure about Waze specifically, but I know like Google Maps and Apple Maps you can. I don't know about, a lot of days now the cars, like the Teslas have their own internal mapping, which is very similar. But you can, you can turn, you can request that those like kind of local areas be turned off. That could be something the town looks into. In addition, it was right around that time that the town put up the signs saying local traffic only. Those are not enforceable, but you see them a lot around because they are a deterrent. I don't know necessarily if the people cutting through are still getting the ways cut throughs or they've just figured it out.
No, Waze still tells you to go that way.
Yeah, that would be something you could request. And I don't know how compliant they'll be. But you could definitely do that.
What about the speed limit?
Speed limit? I, that would be an RJ question because you can't kind of willy nilly change speed limits. You have to have several factors. I know we've put speed capture radar up there before and provided that to Public Works. And unfortunately, I know that street very well. And, you know, you're not, people aren't going 40, they're going 20, they're going 25, but it's really fast.
It's really.
There's no shoulder, there's no sidewalk, it's line. It's kind of like a, it's more like, kind of like a fire road, you know what I mean? Yeah. I mean, those are some options, you know, speed bumps, you know, I'll speak for the fire chief. Those trucks do not like to go over speed bumps when they're full of water, like at all. And that's kind of scary because that is kind of in the, one of the areas we worry about with fire. And if you're putting a speed bump going up a hill, that could really, I don't know if people realize this, but we've had, you know, really bad fires over the last 23 years. But I think I've only seen one that actually burned two houses. Every single one has been one house. Now, a lot of houses have been lost. But your fire department does a really good job in association with many other agencies. There's a, a house catches on fire in Alta right now. You'll probably have two or three Central Marin Fire and probably two or three, I don't know if it'll come from San Rafael or Mill Valley, but they swarm. And they make sure it's contained to one house. And generally we only have to evacuate like four houses, whatever surrounds it. I would be, I don't want to speak for the fire chief, but like, I know speed bumps really slow them down. So that's a little scary. You know, part of me wants to just say, well, it's easy, you know, throw some barricades at the top of Alta Way and make it a dead end. No one's going to, can't shortcut it. But then I go, ah, that's not great for an evacuation route though. So there may be some other sort of.
I understand they did that in Ross. They actually pretended like the road was closed permanently and let Waze know.
Could be some options with like gates and keys, but then it's like, you're having to wait for a fire engine to get up there with the keys to start the evacuation. I don't love it, but yeah.
Yeah.
It has issues, but other, other towns have done similar. I'm not saying it's the right thing to do. I would say have RJ look at maybe some traffic calming measures, some ways to slow it down outside of speed bumps. Maybe that would be.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Pat for, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, so to Adam, actually, you know, we've, we've also just, we've had presentations about evacuation, right? And that group might know how to basically designate its capacity and that it can't take that type of threat and have a broader communication with those type of services that do traffic.
I don't want to get too far afield, but certainly that's a major consideration. It would be, that is an alternative way to get out of town for a lot of residents on the hill over there. So I would be very hesitant before thinking about some sort of gate or something like up there. Anyways though, I, we can certainly, we're going to address that and follow up on Alta Way. And RJ's in the back listening. So it's been talked about a lot tonight. So. Yeah. Yeah. And I just want to thank Pat for asking the question about ways. I think that seems like a no brainer first step. So thank you. Chief, thank you. I'll keep this quick. Want to be respectful of your time. Just a few questions here. Out of curiosity, those seven unavailable patrol officer spots that we saw in the org chart there, would those typically be assigned to specific cities or are they like flexible free floating kind of?
Generally it's rare to have everyone assigned to a shift show up, whether they're at training or on vacation or sick or what have you. But it, when we're, when we're fully staffed, we generally have a sergeant is, is roving, a patrol, a corporal is roving. And then we'll have two officers in San Anselmo. And then three officers basically assigned to Corder Madera Larkspur. And then if that leaves me with one, that would be just kind of a floating general patrol that would go back and forth between. The reason we have to, we put two in San Anselmo and just three in Larkspur Corder Madera is just the geography of it. For cover it, depending on the time of day, it can take 30 minutes to get to San Anselmo, especially like tonight.
Yeah. Thank you. Couple of the questions here. Are you aware of any response from the DA regarding our letter and Larkspur's letter around false marketing of electric motorcycles?
I was sent something today, but I haven't spoke to the district attorney directly. I was hoping to maybe see her at our, we have a monthly meeting together, see her later this week.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. Just wanted to ask, cause it came up. The, the Snapchat gun threat that was resolved, is, was that related to the TUHSD bomb threat? Or, or do we have any, any leads or resolution on that separate item?
We don't know. Yeah, it's, there was some legislation passed two ago in California. There was a, a lot of police legislation passed and one of them was we're not allowed to, even after giving Miranda, talk to a minor unless they have an attorney present. So generally we don't find anything out because the attorney shows up and goes, yeah, we're not going to talk. Which is probably what a good attorney would do regardless. And so it's hard for us. We're not getting really confessions or admissions so much.
Thank you. The last thing I just wanted to, to highlight again and commend you, the fact that you were able to get license plate readers for us at no cost to taxpayers. That is incredible. So I just want to thank you.
I'm not paying for it. So thank the anonymous donors.
Yeah, no, I just, I just want to thank you for, for, I mean, that, that was like a, you pulled a rabbit out of a hat there and it's really impressive work.
Yeah, it's, they're really important in this day and age and we're, we're a little behind. So I just felt we'll do whatever it takes to get them.
Thank you. Charles.
Yeah. Just a little bit of a curiosity follow-up from one of Pat's questions about non-citizens, you know, in the military, if a non-citizen, you know, signs up, there's, it kind of helps fast track their path to, to becoming a citizen. I wonder if the state or if law enforcement has or can, could explore that type of incentive as well.
Can reach out to that one employee.
If that'd be something of interest, but yeah, I mean, the federal government does it for soldiers. So yeah. All right. Thanks.
All righty. Chief, thank you. We're going to open this up to public comment now. So if any members of the public, either in person or on Zoom, would like to ask any questions or make any comments on the presentation. If you're with us in person, please come on up to our podium here. If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. We'll be doing two minutes apiece for public comment. Is there anyone with us in person tonight who'd like to make public comment? Come on up. Thank you.
Well, I want to say, I think our police department is outstanding. I work with them as a volunteer and have done so for almost 10 years. And I cannot, I cannot tell you what a great group of people they are. So the fact they put their lives in, at the front of their job is amazing. But please, anytime you see them, thank them because they do a great job. The other thing I'd like to say is that we do have volunteers at the department. We can, I think, chief, use more. So I think that's something else that we might want to take a look at because if we can take loads off of the officers on administrative type stuff where we're not sworn. But the other thing, we do have to go through a background check. So that was rather extensive, like even for a volunteer. But I, I think that that might help some of the load that the officers are having to deal with at this point in time. So thanks again, chief. It's great to work for you. I love it.
Thank you, Lucinda, for your volunteer service. Any other in-person public comment here tonight? Come on up. Thank you.
And Mayor, if I may, I just want to apologize to the chief for not getting those links up. Something didn't work right, but I did have them up while the questions were going on. So anyone on Zoom and those present in the room probably saw them on the screen and I left them up the whole time.
I noticed that. Thank you.
Want to reiterate, thank you. It was a pleasure to meet you the other night. Two questions I just want to plant. I've been hearing a lot on a listening tour of the number of our public employees that have to make very, very long commutes. Both my sons' teachers have to drive almost an hour sometimes each way to be able to get here. I was curious if you have a sense if there is workforce housing available and all the housing projects under consideration with the housing element of how much your department would need or benefit from? So that was one question if that'd been considered. And the second is, is there a designation for a volunteer or something below an officer who needs to go through training to do observation or ticketing of e-bikes? As an offload. Two questions planting there.
In terms of the work, the, the workplace housing, I get asked this a lot. It's, it depends. It depends on who we're hiring. I think if we're hiring, you know, the 22, 23 year old single person, they would love to have an apartment or something in town that's subsidized, you know, or at a lower rate. I think some of the people we hire though, they're in their thirties or forties and they have families already and have houses. And that's not really great for them, you know? But I think there's definitely some benefit. There isn't really anything available. I know they're building some teacher housing for the county at least. Sorry, it's on, but I'm too far away. They're doing some teacher housing nearby in Larkspur, but I haven't heard anything for town or police or fire. I think it would be beneficial for at least the first few years of someone's career. So I would just say it'd be important if you're going to offer that housing to have a lot of language in there. So if they were to leave or quit or whatever, that they would have to give that spot up for someone else to take it. And maybe we even put a cap on it. Maybe it's just for five years. So you can have some turnover. But I think that's valuable. In terms of ticketing, yeah, it's a, it's a vehicle code infraction. So you do have to be a police officer to issue an e-bike ticket. You could have, if you were, I wouldn't recommend this, but if you were to pass like a municipal code, you may be able to have like code enforcement doing some of this, but that would lead to some problems too. Especially you don't have the ability to, you know, light or siren legally. So you'd have to be kind of pointing them to the side of the road and hope they stop, I guess. But yeah, we've looked into things like that in the past.
Thank you. Any other in-person public comment from folks who haven't spoken yet? Not seen any. Do we have any hands up on Zoom or emailed public comments, Lorena?
We do. We have a hand raised from Patty. Patty, whenever you're ready, you can go ahead.
Thank you. Number one, I wanted to say a great, great job you guys did. But, but. Analysis of how great the new facility is. I remember what it was to get that pass bill built. And I want to know, does it meet all your dreams and hopes? And the other was something that comes up every single year at Christmas time. And I know we love our neighbors in town center and the village, but could we have maybe a cadet or somebody directing traffic? Because it is gridlock for like two or three weeks during the holiday. And trying to get, I remember one year I went from town hall to the east side of the freeway and took 35 minutes. So I just always look at that and think there should be somebody taking care of this. Thank you.
Yeah. As someone who worked pretty hard to get the new building built and the bond passed, we, we definitely enjoy it. You know, it, it's about 10 years old now. Unfortunately, most of our work staff doesn't, didn't know the pain of our old building. So it doesn't probably appreciate it as much as they should, but it, it definitely meets our needs. And one of the, whether it was luck or someone's really good foresight, it was kind of overbuilt by about 50%. And then right when we opened, we merged with San Anselmo. So it actually is like, we're right at capacity in terms of lockers and space. So it kind of worked perfectly for us. In years past, we have gone out there and tried to direct traffic, especially when I was a young officer. And, and frankly, we just make it worse. We're not smarter than the traffic lights, to be honest with you. And it's just, it's kind of like, when it gets to that, it's not quite as bad as, you know, leaving a football stadium or a concert. But there's just too many cars trying to get down too few lanes. So we can't really make it any better. No magic. Now, if we were evacuating, that would be different because we just force everybody to go one way, which would be out onto the freeway. But that's not really what, what's trying to happen around Chris.
Thank you very much. Any other hands up on Zoom or emailed public comments?
No other hands raised on Zoom and no email public comment.
Okay. Then we will close public comment on this item and thank the chief very much for his time and his service. Appreciate it. Thanks for being here. Right. So we're going to move on to item four on tonight's agenda, which is our consent calendar. These are items that are routine or have been previously discussed and do not require. and do not require further discussion. Any member of the public or council may pull a consent calendar item for discussion. Would any council members like to pull any consent calendar items? Being none, we'll open the consent calendar up to public comment. If any members of the public would like to pull a consent calendar item, please come on up here and let us know which item you'd like to pull.
Of parks ordinance?
All right, that is item four A, the parks ordinance. We're going to pull that. We'll come back and revisit that individually in just a minute here. If you are on Zoom and would like to pull any other consent calendar items, please go ahead and raise your hand. Do we have any hands up on Zoom for consent calendar?
Um, no hands raised on Zoom, no email public comment for the consent calendar.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to ask for a motion on items four B through four G, and then we'll come back to four A.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Avasio.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Great, thank you. We're going to open up item four A here, which is second reading and possible adoption of ordinance number 1041, amending title nine, which is public conduct of the Cordera municipal code, uh, regarding public, uh, conduct in public parks and recreation facilities. Um, I'm going to start us off with public comment here. So if you'd like to come up and, uh, make public comment, you will have two minutes.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Doug Levy. I've lived on Redwood, uh, about halfway between Willow and Pixley, uh, 20 years, which is making me feel rather old. Um, you have my written comments and I probably got a little bit carried away doing a red line of the ordinance draft, but some of that is just my editor brain, but, uh, putting my non-practicing lawyer hat on, um, I understand writing, writing laws is not easy, but given the lack of compliance with the parks rules, we have an opportunity to make this so much clearer just by saying no amplified sound. Unless you have a permit, um, don't fly anything over the park. Um, take your trash with you. There's so many words in the ordinance that if we're going to do this right, we need to make it clear. Some of the things that I've marked up, they're technical. I'm not, you know, we don't need to hold up the ordinance for that, but, um, the more we can make the rules clear, both in the ordinance itself and signage, which I know that the town staff is working on, that'll be a benefit. The simpler we can make it, the better. The, um, I did have a couple of specific concerns about the, the ordinance. So amplified sound needs to be clear. The model airplanes, I think the term model airplanes is problematic. We really just want no, nothing flown overhead. So unmanned aerial device maybe, but not model airplanes, because I think that's too narrow. Also, what about kites? Um, and then, uh, on loitering, we need to prohibit blocking any traffic, not just pedestrians. Uh, I'm concerned about wheelchairs and most importantly, we need compliance. We need enforcement. There's no, no enforcement on the weekends. I tallied 86 decibel sound at 6:47 PM on this past Saturday, standing at the corner of Towne, Pius and Pixley. That's ridiculous. That's.
Thank you very much. Great. Thank you. We'll make a call for any additional public comment, either in person, um, or via Zoom on this item. I'm not seeing any in person. Do we have any hands up on Zoom for this item?
No hands raised on Zoom and no email public comment.
Okay. So I'm going to ask staff, um, to respond, um, you know, present to council on this item and, and respond to the public comment that we just heard.
Amy Ackerman, town attorney. Um, you know, I don't really have a response. Um, there are different ways to draft things. We stuck with the general, uh, language that has been in existence. We can change it if council would like. Um, the issue of enforcement is a little bit different. We do have enforcement mechanisms in the ordinance, but it is unfortunately the staffing shortages of the police. So that's sort of a separate issue. I don't know if we want to prohibit kites. Um, we've stuck with sort of drones and motorized airplanes. So, you know, but I'm happy to make changes if it's council's preference that we do so.
Any additional thoughts, Adam?
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I'm not going to, I wanted Amy and thank you, Amy, for responding on the, the drafting question on enforcement. I mean, it's, it's something that, uh, Mr. Levy and I have discussed and certainly I'm taking, we're taking that seriously. Met with, uh, had Tim Berry, Mike Moriarty, RJ, please, uh, Chief Norton all weigh in on sort of maybe some near-term and then longer-term solutions we can think about, um, with respect to the park. And so, um, that's an effort we're going to be, uh, looking into, starting with signage. Once we get an ordinance in place. So, um, recognizing as well that, um, especially during the summer, um, there are enforcement issues on weekends. And so that's sort of just how to, I don't, I, at this point, some of those issues, certainly they, the non-emergency line at the CNPA is available, but the response maybe there may be other priorities as you just heard a presentation about officers patrolling and responding to emergencies. On our end, we can also, something that I'm going to be looking at is how do we, um, also get some coverage on weekends in the peak summer months? It's a seasonal issue for the most part. Um, it's my understanding, but, um, you know, it's, it's, uh, uh, I'll just say that I'm going to work with, um, the concerns that I've heard here tonight. And it's not just Mr. Levy. We've heard these issues, uh, come from, but it's typical. You have a busy park. It's a very popular place to be. Um, but we need, we do have rules for a reason. We got to figure out a, you know, enforce some of those, um, on the weekends.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council members?
I just have two quick questions. One, because I don't know, does code enforcement, do they work seven days?
No, they don't.
They're just doing Monday through Friday, I assume? And then is parking wreck? I know you've had discussions. What about signage? Just no, no A, B, C, D, and E? Um, and I know.
Absolutely.
We always look for consistent signage also.
And I would say, yes. And I, and that's certainly, we wanted to get these rules into place and the signage, you know, we can certainly use different language on signage. That's just very understandable for the people who are using the park and very succinct and clear. Uh, but yes, that's something that we definitely want to roll out and consistent throughout, uh, especially the town park, those issues.
Thanks. Just one question. Are there penalties fines for, uh, loud music in the park? We have those already in the, sorry, I didn't know if those, those details were there. So it's really just a matter of getting the word out and then having some enforcement.
Yes.
At some point.
And the, we have the noise ordinance. Um, certainly if there's amplified music, that's an easy one. There's other sorts of noise. Uh, it does take someone to monitor, um, be there at the right time, frankly. So.
Okay.
Thank you. Any questions or comments down here? Okay.
I have a question about the amplified music. It, it, that's any amplified music, not live music, but like if someone has, um, you know, music playing, recorded music playing.
I believe it's any, um, amplified music for which a town issued permit has not been issued.
Okay. It doesn't matter the source. I mean, what I mean is recorded music. I mean, you, could you bring your radio or could you bring your, like, I know that sounds like a muthausen ears. Can you bring, say, your JBL water speaker and just, you know, can you play that or it? I, I'm just trying to figure out, oh, do you just mean you can't have a band?
We have a noise ordinance. And so if, if the noise is above certain decibels.
Okay.
Then you can get cited. So it doesn't, it's not the source so much as how loud it is.
Okay.
Charles, go ahead and make your comment because we already took the public comment.
Yeah. So, so my general is, is these, the words were chosen, they're vetted, right? This is the second reading and we have a second reading so that we can receive comment. If it's vital to challenge it and change it, right? And I appreciate the comment and I think they should be considered. And if basically these ordinances which are being revised already to try to address some of this nuisance and other items are not living up to the expectation, we can always come back and revise it further. Um, and so that's what I would suggest because it is the second reading. It was going to be a consent calendar item. And it has been discussed internally for quite some time to come to these conclusions. We test out these without the direct verbiage that expands beyond where, where we feel comfortable at this point. Um, and so I would like to keep them the way they are personally. Um, and that's what I would support, but I also would like to continue to see residents engaged and see if it's effective and track, um, the performance of these ordinances. So.
Thank you. The only thing I would add is that I think the council has been very clear and consistent in our direction to staff, um, to really, whenever we touch it, leave the Muni code better than we found it. And Amy has really shown, um, that she understands and has taken that direction to heart. She's done a great job of cleaning up the Muni code, right? Every ordinance that you've touched has come back, um, you know, in my opinion, clearer, cleaner, more straightforward, easier for a layperson like me to understand when I read the Muni code, exactly what am I allowed or not allowed to do? Um, and I, I, I see that in this ordinance too. So I really appreciate your efforts here. Um, and I would certainly say though, you know, we'll keep an eye out and ordinance can be changed. And I think if we get the sense that members of the public are confused by the ordinance and are not understanding what's allowed, or if we get the sense that conduct is still taking place that the community does not want, we can always come back, um, you know, and, and amend our ordinance and we're open to doing that. So I just wanted to thank you for sharing your concerns and thank Amy for the work that she's done in helping make our Muni code more accessible. Um, and with that, I'm happy to entertain a motion on this item if somebody would like to make one.
So moved.
Second.
So four A of the consent calendar, I move that we approve it.
I'll resecond it.
Councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Avasio.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Great, thank you. And thank you, Doug, for your comments. Appreciate it. Um, all right, we're going to move on to tonight's business items, the first of which is six A. This is discuss, discussion and possible direction to staff on the new street sweeper alternatives, um, evaluating EV versus not EV. And I will turn it over to RJ.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and council members. Um, so Public Works, uh, as you know, is responsible for maintaining our streets, sidewalks, vegetation, all sorts of things around town. Um, street sweeper is one of our, you know, key piece of equipment. Um, anyone who's lived here for any duration probably sees that regularly each week. Um, so it gets a lot of usage and we rely on it. It's, it's our only sweeper that we own. Um, luckily it's, it's been good to us. Um, this, um, RAVO brand sweeper, uh, was purchased in 2014. So it's really gotten about 10 years. And, uh, talking to our mechanic, he, he thinks that's 10 years is really, uh, something you would celebrate in his mind, given just the wear and tear that a machine like that takes. Um, so, but nonetheless, we're, you know, we're in the, we need to, replace it. So we wanted to consider some options. Um, so we've discussed, um, the benefits of using a similar model made, made by RAVO. Generally some of those things that we like about it, it's kind of right sized for our town. Um, there's smaller ones, there's bigger ones. And then, um, and this one is kind of like a good fit for us. And then the question we had brought in the original staff report was whether to go all electric or gas powered. Since submitting the staff report last week, um, we did follow up and, and have a demo of the all-electric version. And, um, unfortunately it, it did not perform to this, to the level that we had hoped. Um, we thought that it was going to perform the same, except only have a maximum, um, continuous use of eight hours. And it actually just doesn't have some of the power needed to go up some of our narrow, um, steep streets such as Christmas tree hill. So they took it on, um, about three hours worth of routes that we would normally do. And, um, two of those routes on Christmas tree hill, they were not able to complete. So that was, um, a concern there. Um, we did then hear through public comment that there were some other sweepers to consider. And, um, so two in particular that we, we spent some time calling around, looking into, looking at the specs, um, was one was a Elgin, which is actually, um, you know, one of, they're actually one of the top brands in the industry. So no issues with the, you know, the brand and quality, but it is one of those larger sweepers that you're more likely to see on main drags or county roads. Um, it, it's got a 26 foot, um, turning radius, whereas a RAVO has 16. So a lot more three and five point turns to turn around in some of our streets. Um, and then the other one we looked at also is, um, it's called Green Machine. And it's, um, a smaller version. And, um, you know, I think some of that, you know, if you had more than one sweeper in your arsenal, you know, there'd be a place for it, but as, you know, you're looking for one in particular, it's, it's on the smaller size. Um, so after talking to our mechanic, our superintendent team, and again, doing the research, um, you know, we still think that, you know, the RAVO series is the one we want. And based on our, you know, more recent research, we, we don't think the electric one is yet at the performance level that we need here in town. So, with that, I'll turn over for a question or comment. Thanks.
Thanks a lot, RJ. Questions from council members? We'll start down here. We'll start over here.
He raises here.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's fresh. Um, so you brought up an interesting point is that having a couple of different street sweepers in your quiver, the different sizes to deal with the different road conditions that we have. But we don't have as a municipality, the ability to afford two of them. So I wonder, does Larkspur also have their own street sweeper?
Um, you know, I don't know.
Sure. Yeah. Uh, it, because, because I mean, moving forward, right? It, because they also have similar road condition shared and intermingling and stuff like that. If we could, it, it, I don't know if you ever do equipment sharing with other municipalities, but it might be able to give you a more robust offering to deal with all the intricacies. If the battery powered ones are going to have these kinds of issues, so we can get really robust, larger performance on our rated, the street grade ones. And then have one specific for hills that we share, right? Uh, moving forward outside of this one, you know, but, um, so that's a question, I guess, uh, is, could we do that? Right? Uh, you don't have to answer right now. It's okay. But, um, and so, but also based on those findings, right? I guess, is there determination right now that electric is not actually being considered and it's really just a proposal now to consider gas? Or is it that the total proposal for this needs to be maybe given more time to consider, given the, the frequent, the time in which you did this test in, in relationship to the report?
So, um, yeah, thanks for the questions. Um, so we, I mean, we were excited to be able to present an option that we thought would meet performance. Um, and then the real life demo just did not turn out that way. And then, like I said, um, from calling around the large and the small one and in the fade back and looking at the performance spec, they also don't hit the mark, but, um, you know, real quickly on the shared services, you know, the sweeper, it, you need it, you know, definitely when you need it. So like pre and post storms. And so it's hard to share that. And then, um, the other thing is, you know, we only have so many staff we can put on a sweeper. So we actually currently half, a portion of our sweeping is done by Mill Valley refuse on a regular schedule. And then our team does the other half on a regular schedule, but come pre and post storm, it's out there almost around the clock. Um, so it, you know, I, we're, I'm, we're always open to shared services and we've done that for certain things. Um, it's hard to coordinate that when it rains here, it rains there kind of thing. But, um, yeah, I hear you.
So you brought up another, it's, yeah, in the inquiry. Um, so do we actually compensate, uh, valley refuse for the street sweeping on the regular? And, you know, if we want to look at a different model and it, it requires some different type, like, is it also in the future? Is it a consideration that to meet the electrical standard, you know, electrification moving forward, we might need to take all that fee in, in, in-house to be able to deliver those kinds of services. So how's that work?
So it's actually built into their franchise agreement. So they, it's all folded into their annual service to the town.
Right.
And going paying out an additional out of pocket.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, but, but like everyone's fee is basically kind of, and, and when does that come up for looking at and thinking about moving forwards?
Um, June, right?
June.
No, that's the yearly increase.
No, the, the actual contract. No, the, the actual contract.
Right. It comes, it's going to, it's, it's going to come up at the end of 2026, the very end of 2026. So something we will discuss with the council actually relatively.
An interesting little side component that, you know, I wouldn't normally think about in, in that franchise agreement. So thanks.
Thank you.
Rosa, any questions?
Thank you as always, RJ. So how old was the current sweeper when it started to have breakdowns?
I mean, I've been hearing it from my team for several years. But, you know, I like to make sure that it's appropriate to spend, you know, amount of money before I bring something to council or, you know, consider putting in the budget. You know, a few years ago, you know, maybe a few hydraulic lines a year, which it's like, hey, you know, it's, it's not the best. The, the hardest part is that you're, you know, a lot of these parts might take a week to get sometimes. So you're down for a week and if you get down for a week at the wrong time, then it's, it can be challenging. But then, yeah, now it's pretty consistent. You know, every month or two. And it's just taking a lot of our maintenance equipment mechanics time. We're just waiting on parts. So it's down a lot. But generally, I mean, think of even a vehicle, you know, most people don't these days drive vehicles that are more than 10 years old. So it's, it's gotten its fair share of usage. So. And I've actually just in general been surprised. When I started working here until I was 18, how much that piece of equipment is used? I mean, most days I'm working here, I see it, I pass by it. So it's, I mean, it's, it's been doing its thing and it's been doing a great job, but it's just time to get anyone.
Right. And just in light of the increase we've seen in the cost of a fire engine as opposed to pre pandemic, I was just wondering how much, do you remember how much the, the, the current one cost?
So I was told it was right around 140, $150,000 10 years ago.
Wow.
And this one, the, and it is gas powered. So the similar comparable newer model is 311.
Yeah. Okay. That sounds about the kind of increase. And let's see, did I have another? Oh, and if we go with one that is gas, I read that there sort of the fine print was due to California emissions requirements. Special permits may, may be required for the gas engines. And I'm wondering, does that add any significant cost?
You know, I don't know the answer to that, but we would obviously try to get it to meet all the standards, even if that means some minor tweaks to what we've been quoted.
And just on that, since we're talking about the state. That was, I think, in relation to CARB.
Um, yeah.
Air Resources Board. We are aware of sort of the requirement on medium and heavy duty vehicles. We're in the transition period by 2027. I think all vehicles purchased will have to be electric, all electric. But right now it's sort of requirement is that 50% of your medium and heavy duty vehicles are electric. And so we just have to, we're sort of playing that out in terms of when we purchase. We have another vehicle in our budget for Public Works, which would be a medium vehicle, medium duty vehicle like a Ford Lightning 150 extended range would qualify for the medium duty.
Yeah. And I should just add that the regulations have a whole lot of exceptions that apply. There's an understanding that industry is not, it's where we need for trucks and vehicles. And part of the regulation is pressure on the manufacturers to develop these. But if, if we can't locate a non-zero emissions vehicle that meets the needs, that can fall into an exception. So we are making sure, you know, we're compliant with, with the choices that RJ is identifying.
Okay, great.
And to elaborate on that, I think what Adam and Amy were referring to is, you know, we're in the market also to purchase a Vactor truck. That's primarily going to be operated on our ST2 maintenance. But that being a medium vehicle, vehicle, you know, they, that, that one is not really available at the performance level in EV. And so again, we have to hit this 50 50, 50% mark. And so if we can't get it through the sweeper, we can get it via an EV F-150, which we're in the market for at least one or two trucks this year. So.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I have no questions. Pat?
Yes. So as you know, I got some feedback from my environmental buddies and my electrification heroes. And I'm just wondering if we took a little bit more time. I mean, they, they recommended a hybrid. There was some other brands they suggested we look at. If we took more time on this, do you think it's possible that we could find an electric vehicle that could do the job or even a hybrid vehicle that could do the job? I mean, I know you're working hard on this already, but it, it looks like there might be other things we could explore.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think, you know, we're totally open to spending some time on it with the feedback. You know, really this was brought, I mean, so it's, it's in the budget. The way that we would purchase it complies with public contract code. But given the, the two quotes, you know, we really wanted to get council feedback on it. So it's something where with, with some direction, we could still spend the time needed and make a purchase. We don't have to bring it back for another dialogue unless that's a requirement, but you know, a request from the council. But, um, yeah, if we can find one that, you know, has a very close turning radius and all those other good things and can make itself up Christmas Tree Hill, then like.
Some say they have, there's one that has four times the battery of the.
Yeah. So that's the Elgin, but it's, it's much larger, 26 foot wide turning radius. So, and, and what I'm being told by my team is also uniquely, it has a smaller hopper than the medium sized one, because it's more geared for, I don't know, construction projects, oh, construction projects and other things where you sweep and then you dump it on the side of the road and come pick it up later and have the ability to dump and dump. But we don't really have those around town. We have to go back to the courtyard. And then the other thing is they're not vacuum sweepers, which is something that we use to clean catch basins and other functions. So again, we're trying to hit all the, the things that we use.
Do you think there's more out there to see or have you pretty much explored the market?
I, I think it's less likely we're going to find one, but we'll still spend a little more time before we pull the trigger. Yeah.
Great.
Thank you, Pat. Fred?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Do we have like a schedule for equipment replacement? Cause it sounds like in this case, it was almost like, let's wait till it's on its last leg and it's going to start costing more money to fix it than is replaced. Is there like a regular schedule or is it just all?
Yeah. So when we brought our current equipment mechanic on, he's got a lot of experience. That was one of his key assignments to, we actually invested in a software program that now tracks it versus just kind of handwritten notes that, you know, makes sense to one person, but don't carry forward. So we've got that going for us and then just his overall knowledge. So, you know, I'm, I'm not a mechanic and so I, I have a, you know, I don't, I don't know exactly how many repairs and hydraulic lines have to go bad in a year before it to make sense to replace it. But he, you know, he's, he's pretty confident that this is the right time. And he's been telling me for more than a year and a half. So that's, that's, you know, why we put it in the budget back in July. So.
Okay. Thanks. And then if you do go back and do more research, what kind of a timeframe are we looking at? Just because if the old one isn't working, you know, for, if you go on another two months, does that mean we're going to start putting more money into it? And it's right now it's operational, correct? Or is it not?
It is operating when it's not down. And then when it goes down, it's down for, you know, a week or more. We can always rent one, but they're $15,000 to rent for a month. So there is a fallback, not one we want to be stuck in for a long period of time. But, um, you know, we want to get the purchase right. So that's ultimately what it comes down to. And we don't hit it exactly perfect on the timing. We can make it buy. And, and, and we've had even times where we've had such a big storm come at early enough in the season where the leaves haven't fallen off gradually that we've called in Mill Valley refuse and said, hey, you know, can you send someone on these streets for the next full day while we hit the, you know, the other streets or something? So we, we get creative.
So it seems like we could get by another winter?
I think we'd rather not, but again, um, this, you know, one of the ones I mentioned, Green Machine, he told me it was available in about 120 days. And he said, that's, you know, lightning speed. And then it just depends, each model is going to be a little different.
It sounds like what I'm hearing you say is you don't mind going back researching to see if you can find hybrid or just something else.
Yeah. I mean, if we find, I guess I would ask council for, you know, what is the cost range? Cause I'll give you an example. I did get a quote on the Elgin EV. And that one is 850 plus tax. So it is significantly more. That's the one that's too big. But if you said, hey, you know, spend the week or two, and if you can find, you know, the one that works just, you know, very comparable to RAVO and it's this price, then go that direction, then, then that's helpful too.
All right. Thanks.
Yeah.
And just to reiterate what RJ said, but we're responsive timing. I think we really want to get this Yeah. done as quickly, you know, or if we can get it for this winter, we try.
That's why I was asking the question.
Yeah. And, and I was, we were able to do, I mean, we actually did a deep dive this afternoon on those two in, in an afternoon. So, you know, even a week, we should be able to make enough calls and call our counterparts in other jurisdictions and just really canvas the options. So.
I had a couple of follow-up questions as a, so one is if we go with a hybrid or electric, those are very different mechanical systems. They're not even mechanical systems or they're partial, right? So I don't know if these, they provide maintenance contracts that we could embed in the initial purchase. But sometimes I've found with specialized equipment, it makes sense to have their specialized mechanics come in and, and do like, you know, full, like replace the hoses once a year, right? So it doesn't cause more downstream damage over time. Is that, is this type of vehicle and this type of use, would it benefit from like a more contracted maintenance schedule?
I think because we have someone in-house that's really skilled. I mean, he works on, he used to, he'll work on race cars, like
And he's comfortable with.
Race cars. He's comfortable with electric.
Okay.
He's not afraid to call up the manufacturer, you know, mid replacement and get, run things by them, but we're very lucky. He's, he's really good at what he does. So he's comfortable. I'm comfortable.
Okay. And the other one is, is, uh, would the old machine have any resale value? Or is it basically going to be a town write-off? And so we'll see some degree of that that we could expect.
So there's very little resale from, we've tried to, and we got one offer for $3,000. Maybe someone would buy it for 15. Um, we actually were thinking about until we, especially if we went the EV route of using it as a kind of backup.
Grant for it.
Yeah. So I mean, we, we might, I mean, I think until we, and even if we purchase a brand new one, and it's, let's just say the gas powered one, we're, I think it's still worth holding for a year until like everything is dialed and it's just collecting dust and not hitting the road. And then at which time we'll.
So you might keep it and, and run it to ground even.
Yeah. I, I think at least until like we're in a safe space where it's not being used because the other one just doesn't stop going.
Yeah. And, and we, do we do depreciation and value on most of that equipment?
I'm sure we depreciate it here, but that's a Daria question.
Yeah, I know. All right. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to open this up to public comment. If any members of the public would like to comment in person on this item, please come on up to our podium here. If you're with us on Zoom and would like to make public comment, please go ahead and raise your hand. Not seen any in-person public comment. Do we have any hands up on Zoom?
No hands raised on Zoom and no email public comment for this item.
Okay. Thank you. So we're going to close public comment and bring this back to council for discussion. This has been a excellent thorough discussion. Um, I'm going to start off just in the hopes of maybe framing the discussion here. RJ, thank you for your work in researching this. You know, I think what I would like to see is do, I, I came into this really excited to approve an electric street sweeper. And it seems like it's possible that the technology just isn't there yet, which would be very disappointing if that's the case. What I would ask that we do, if the council agrees, is basically give you the direction that we would like to try and find a way to make an EV or a hybrid, if an EV doesn't work. You know, make that work, whether that looks like sharing with Larkspur, whether that looks like going back to, you know, taking another canvas of the market out there, seeing what's out there. But, you know, I would ask that we give that direction to try and make this work if we can, but that we delegate and trust. And just say, look, you understand that that's our priority, but we trust you to, to make a determination if you just don't see it happening logistically, or because the, the EV technology isn't out there. And I'm, I'm wondering if that could be a way for us to all feel comfortable that our, our hopes on this item will be acted on to the, to the best, you know, of your abilities. But if it, if it can't happen, that you have what you need, the authorization to move ahead, purchasing the RAVO five I series, uh, if that just ends up being what makes the most sense. So I'll throw that out there and open that up to council members for their thoughts.
So Elon, just for clarification, then under that direction, RJ wouldn't need to come back to us with options. If he can't find options, he would just go buy the, um, the gas one.
Yeah. My, my understanding is we can do that because it's already budgeted for. And I really appreciate you bringing this to us for discussion, even though you didn't have to, because you knew that this was important to us. So thank you very much.
And then how much is that budgeted for?
So you would, so currently we have 310 budgeted, but we have, um, we believe we have 600K access in the equipment fund. Is that correct?
Yeah. So if we went for a higher, uh, cost vehicle, we would probably come back with a budget revision in January. When we do that or January, February, we'll have a budget. We have about $600,000 expected to be in our ending balance of our equipment fund. That's essentially undesignated at this point. So.
I guess what I'm trying to figure out is how much are we authorizing RJ to go up to? Is it the three, three 20 or so for the gas powered one? Or is it the 600? That's what I'm trying to figure out. If you don't, if you're not going to come back to us.
Yeah. So I think I do need some correction on that amount.
So we know that the electric powered sweeper is going to cost more. So I think we need to authorize up to X for an electric vehicle or the lower priced electric one, if we really can't find something. I mean, I just sent you an email. Capitola just introduced a new electric sweeper. So it's kind of a big deal that people are doing it.
Based on, I have one more question. Do, do they have street sweeper technology that's pulled behind? So like if you towed it behind a Ford F-150 Lightning or something, so it could be independent of the electrification? I'm just curious. I mean, I'm not an industry expert in it.
Haven't seen one, but they do have all sorts of different types. But I'd be surprised if it's, we, we can look at it.
Get a Cybertruck and just, you know, pull behind some amazing machine behind it that does the job. If, and that way, you know, you're, you know, and it might actually like make it independent from all the mechanics of it. So you could, I don't know, another, another just brainstorm if we're brainstorming about creative ways to deal with our issues.
Yeah. And I think that might fall under what, what I was envisioning as the delegate and trust part of, of the direction that I was proposing. So I would propose that we, as part of that authorize, you know, maybe just up to the high end of what's given in the staff report for the electric one, which is 622,000. So I'd be comfortable if we just say, hey, RJ, you've got up to 622,000. If you can find a way to make an EV or a hybrid work, and if you can't, then stick with the, with the five I series for 311.
I, I would just, I agree with that. I'd just make one suggestion. I think it was a Nautut seat 650. I'm, I'm just playing.
Sounds good.
Playing with a few, a few numbers. It's not that much.
Thank you.
And one other thing to just add on this, Ross Valley Paramedic and Central Region Police, it's the same type issue where they, they're looking at EVs, but right now, at least for those two agencies and even Central Region Fire, the technology is not there, at least for them at this point in time.
Chief Norton just updated me. We're going to get a, uh, they're having two ground up built for them that will be EV this year. Very cool.
So are we, are we good with? So are we, are we good with up to 650K if RJ can find a way to make an EV or hybrid work? Otherwise, 311 for the uh, for the gas one. Does that work for everyone?
Works for me.
Works for me.
The 311, it's it.
Yeah, I think that's understood. Yeah.
Do you need it?
No matter what it is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But knowing that it will be the 311. Yes.
But even if it's more, do you want like, so let's say there is the $750,000 solution, then we want him to come back? Or is it that you want him to resolve it under 650?
It's fine. We can, we can come back if it, if we find something that works that exceeds.
Yeah, let us, okay, yeah, let us know.
I think you're hearing an indication of how much in our hearts we really want to do this electrical, but we have to be realistic. So I hope we can, I hope something will appear.
If you buy gas, it's okay with me because there's another, if there isn't technology, we need to accept that RJ is going to buy a gas vehicle. Just acknowledge, no matter what our hearts want, until the engineers actually change the infrastructure.
RJ, does that feel like clear direction? Okay, great. Thank you, everyone. So we'll close item six A and move on to item six B. Uh, consideration and possible authorization to the Director of Public Works uh, to execute and record a notice of completion for the Corte Madera Town Hall and to approve an additional $102,000 for Alton Construction and release the retainer in the amount of 125 grand.
Thank you. Um, so it's a little wild to think that this project is coming to a close. It's um, I think been around, started up right around when I started here um, in Corte Madera. So um, you know, about six years. So it's, it's been quite a project. Um, you know, really, it's really been a community involved process in a good way. Um, it started out, you know, for all of those here that, you know, have participated in it, you know, really looking at locations, considering the existing building and whether it made sense to remodel that or or do something new. But really, this building that we're sitting in is um, a collective of all of the feedback that we heard in the first three, four years worth of planning and design. And um, you know, luckily we were able to get through the, you know, the last couple of years of construction and get into this building. You know, I know it's been exciting to have the ribbon cutting and share all that with our community members, uh, that, you know, I I think, um, Mayor, you know, the stats better than me on on this building in terms of where it stands from zero net energy and zero net carbon is, I don't know if it's the first in the county or in the state, but I'm nonetheless, um, pretty, pretty amazing feat to be a part of. And beyond that, um, you know, I think just overall the quality, um, we're really happy with how it turned out. And so um, this item is to close that project, um, file a notice of completion. Uh, one thing that, you know, Adam and I had to really wrestle with for several months toward the end is, you know, we did have a, you know, once we got through the actual physical work, we still had 20, 30 outstanding change orders that um, between us and the contractor, we hadn't fully resolved yet. We worked at it for months and months to negotiate, and we got to a point where um, you know, both sides were not um, getting what they want. And either we were going to kind of make this final um, release or additional amount of 102,000 or potentially going to a costly lengthy claims process. So um, ultimately, we we do think this was the best solution. That's, that's what we're recommending. You know, I think we got, uh, you know, tremendous value for what we paid. Doesn't mean that it's, you know, wasn't a costly endeavor, but um, you know, I think this is really going to last the test of time and be a great building for for Corte Madera for, you know, potentially the next century. So um, but with that, I'm happy to open up for questions and comments.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
No questions. You have one. What's the cost in here? I think it was like 13 million or so construction?
Yes. So the um, so the contract with Alton, um, with the additional 102,000 brings it up to 13.65 million. Um, we have a slide here on this TV um, that really shows all of the other things, you know, time that went into the whole outreach process and planning and design. You know, we with part of having a low bid contractor situation in particular, it's, you know, the construction management team, there's required material testing, required um, special inspection testing. Even the whole architecture team has to be involved in construction to answer, you know, requests for information or things that come up. So that's um, a service that continues through construction. We purchased uh, equipment and furniture for the building. So for the building, you know, through everything over the past six years, it did come up to 16,000,70,664. And then off to the side, um, you know, we did have to pay for temporary offices, which we have at 343,000. And we also put 53 into the artwork and the grand opening ceremony.
So the total is more like 16 and a half all in.
That's correct.
Do you remember? I don't, I don't even remember. Do you remember how we financed this? Seven and a half million? I think we did bonds. And I can't remember what the debt service was. Do you know just round numbers? Because that leaves about another nine million or so, how that was financed?
Yes. So as you mentioned, 7.6 million were the the financed portion of this. And the rest was really, um, a lot of it was really putting away the unallocated ending balances over several fiscal years into a town capital project fund, which ultimately about $6 million of that um, was expended through that uh, town capital project fund. And then other expenditures were done uh, through uh, toward the end of the project. We moved and uh, sales tax fund was used for a portion of that. Uh, and then the other expenditures, I think, were just budgeted in each of the fiscal years as part of the financing, especially the planning, the pre-planning part of that was built into the capital improvement project um, budget each year. So you have, other than the 7.6, it was sort of a um, either a pay as you go and budgeted for on a yearly basis. And then the, or um, essentially storing away surplus funds on a fiscal year into a capital project fund for when we actually needed to expand that, which was built, used to pay for Alton's contract.
So other the, other than, I think the 102 that, you know, we have an idea where that's going to come from, everything is, you know, basically already addressed those prior costs.
Okay. And do you remember what the debt service is yearly on on that seven, six?
I want to say it's in this around 600 to 700.
That's fine. Range is good. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Uh, that was council question. So we'll open this item up to public comment. Any members of the public who would like to comment, if you're with us in person, come on up to our podium. If you're with us via Zoom, please raise your hand. Not seeing any members of the public in person wanting to comment. Do we have any hands up on Zoom, Lorena?
No hands raised on Zoom and no email public comment for this item.
Okay, thank you. So we'll bring this item back to council for discussion and a possible motion. We'll start down here.
I just have one comment. In the written minutes, can we make sure that we get in there that the all in cost was 16 and a half million? Thank you. Yeah, thanks. And then I'm okay because basically we're approving the 102,000, correct?
And we're anticipating that will come from the town's capital project fund.
And I'm sorry, Eli, just one more question. Is there any way going forward when we have presentations from staff that we can get those included as part of the agendas? Um, I know Marin Transit does that. Um, so.
Which which part?
Presentations, like the presentation.
Of the slides.
Correct, that we can get those included. So it's actually part of the package that we get and that that public gets also.
Sometimes we are able to do that if we have a presentation done well in advance. But frankly, more often than not, we're getting the staff report done and then we're preparing for the presentation by in the Monday. Trying to get those done basically on the Monday before the meeting.
Okay.
Fred, are you asking because you you feel like there was content that was in the slides that wasn't in the?
I think just presentations in general. Again, I know Marin Transit and other agencies, when I get the board package, the presentations are included as part of that board package. And I just see it's more information, I think, not just for us, but also for the public, especially when for me, when you're looking at slides, you actually see.
And are they give, are they updated app? Or do we update them meeting afterward?
No, well, we record the meeting. So I mean, that's typically the slides will be shown. If we show something on the screen, they'll be shown in the recording.
Yes. And then we do have a section on the website, which is where I add the um, comments that we get after we publish the agenda. So um, late correspondence or presentations get added to that section of the website. Sorry.
So they're available.
And it is made available.
So that way they can fine tune them based on.
Yeah, I just think, I don't want to get into it. I just think people write like this presentation, the only way to refine this.
I think message received.
Message received. I, I, yeah, I just don't want to.
Great, thank you. Um, all right, comments on this item. No comments? Any comments? Okay, I have no comments, so I will invite a member of the council to make a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the additional 102,000 to Alton Construction and release retention in the amount of 125,000.
I can second, I'll second it.
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Avasio?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item six C, which is discussion and possible action by the mayor to appoint a council member to the countywide sea level rise governance steering committee, the Twin Cities Disaster Preparedness Committee, and the Marin Healthy Youth and the Temporary Guiding Coalition for the Larksburg-Cordillera School District's Vision and Strategic Planning Process.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and thank you, members of the council. The item before you tonight is to ratify the mayor's appointment of council members to fill primary and alternate committee appointments to the groups that were mentioned when the um, item was presented. There are two groups that we discuss um, annually when we do the annual um, appointment process after council reorganizes, and that is the Twin Cities Disaster Preparedness Committee and the Marin Healthy Youth Partnerships. So these, these um, are current groups that Councilmember Thomas serves on and due to some conflicts, she won't be able to attend their regular meetings. And so we're looking for um, someone to cover for Councilmember Thomas. And for the Twin Cities Disaster Committee, right now she serves as a primary and Mayor Beckman is an alternate. And in the recommendation, um, we're asking for um, a declaration of who will be the primary and who will be the alternate. Sometimes council has made the alternate the primary and then just added a different alternate. So up to you, um, how you want to determine that. And then for Marin Healthy Youth Partnerships, staff is recommending the appointment of Vice Mayor Avasio because um, she um, had some interest in taking over for that. So if that were to be done, then we would have um, be alternate as Councilmember Casissa. And then for the new bodies, I'll go over what was provided in the staff report. So the first one is a request from the county. In spring of 2024, the Board of Supervisors approved the contract with AECOM to lead the county in developing recommendations for a countywide governance model to address sea level rise. Um, the project is focusing on answering two questions, and those were added in the staff report. Basically, the county's team is proposing a committee structure that's composed of a steering committee of geographically representative elective officials and also a technical advisory committee. But the appointment that the county is requesting um, from each jurisdiction is for the steering committee, which is going to focus on ensuring that the overall project is conducted in a way that results in a recommendation that reflects the needs of the broader community. The steering committee will guide communication and stakeholder engagement plans and review and approve the final recommendation. We don't have location or dates and times um, for the meetings, but they would meet regularly at an approximately three month interval through the duration of the project. And then the last group that's also new is the Temporary Guiding Coalition for the Larksburg-Cordillera School District's Vision and Strategic Planning Process. So this one was something that um, staff had reached out to council on in mid-August as um, the school district is working on developing a long-term vision and strategic plan for what they can become by 2036. And they have a vision that's broken down into four parts. That information was in the staff report. Um, and another part of that is developing a strategic plan that's aligned to their system portrait that will help help them implement a vision. And so um, in their outreach, they've asked for participation on three levels and specifically for councils participation, it would be on level three, which is the involvement through their guiding coalition. In the research that I did, it looks like they had a form that interested individuals would fill out. But there was a special request from Superintendent um, Geifman for someone from council to join that guiding coalition. And when staff contacted council, we didn't um, get any, we weren't successful in gathering interest. And over the weekend, we learned that uh, Superintendent Geifman, am I saying that right?
Yeah.
He also had reached out to Vice Mayor Avasio. And she did agree to participate in that group. However, there's a conflict because they switched one of the meetings. And so I believe they rescheduled for this Friday, and that would be the first meeting. And then the next two meetings would be October 11th and November 8th. And it looks like they're two um, full day meetings. So whoever gets appointed to this would be attending, I guess, this Friday and then those two additional dates. And that would be just one person needing to be appointed. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions that I'm able to.
Sounds good. Thank you. Any questions? Otherwise, we'll just take these one by one. Okay, so uh, Sea Level Rise Steering Committee, um, if it's okay with council members, I would like to do that just because I've been passionate about the adaptation issues. Um, does anybody want to put their hand up for alternate? No, that's a no. No alternate.
That that group doesn't require an alternate.
Okay, no alternate. Cool. Okay, sounds good. Okay, um, Disaster Preparedness Committee, um, anybody willing to put their hand up for that?
I have a conflict.
Okay. Right? Yes.
It's it's pretty late in my uh, tenure to start taking appointments like that.
If I do duty, I can do it, but I can only be on that call for about 20 minutes.
Yeah, I mean.
I will say there are a lot of people on committees from Corte Madera, but just not.
Like residents.
Councilmember Thomas, is your microphone?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
And and lots of members of the NRG are on that committee. I mean, a lot. So.
Okay.
Corte Madera is represented, but.
Okay.
Not really a council member.
I do have a question on that one again, because it sounds like none of us have the availability and don't kill me. Is there any way we could have maybe a staff member? Because it's it's an hour, just attend it, just so that there is some input from the Corte Madera side? Just food for thought.
Right?
Yeah. Okay.
I'll do the food for thought.
All right. Um, Pat, you definitely can't? Okay. Charles, can we ask you to pitch in just until you're until you're out of here?
You can put my name on it. And ultimately, my schedule is quite compacted as well. So I'll try to attend. Give me the information.
Okay, Pat will be your alternate. You guys will tag team it and make it work. And then last one is the school steering committee. So did you say you you can do that?
I'm gone. I'm, I have to go to a funeral tomorrow.
So, okay.
I I can go.
Okay, Fred.
Let me know if you want me to just cover this one or cover.
I think it's the continuity is what they're going to play out, what they're trying to do, and then the next two sessions you're going to do.
I'm committed to all three sessions.
It's a three session thing.
So I'll, I'll be your alternate there.
Okay.
So you can come in the morning, I'll go in the.
I'll be the wingman.
All right, here we go. Lorena, Sea Level Rise, Eli, Disaster Primary, Charles, Alternate Pat, Healthy Youth, Primary Pat, Alternate Fred, School District, Primary Fred, Alternate Pat.
You and me.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for stepping up. Appreciate. All right. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for stepping up. Appreciate it. Yes, no worries. Okay, so that is our last business item for tonight. So we're going to move on to item seven, which is council reports. And we'll start with the town manager.
Just real quick, I wanted to give an update. I think I've individually talked to some of you, but the Tamil Pious Overcrossing Project is sort of heating, heating up a little bit with respect to the design of the pedestrian and bike bridge piece of the project. A lot of the traffic engineering work has been worked out and the ped bike piece of the project has been now discussed. It was discussed at BPAC, I think, last week. And staff has been working with Caltrans and the state DOT on actually ensuring that we get a good design. One that's attractive and comfortable and inviting for pedestrians and bicyclists to really use. So in any case, we're working hard on that and trying to ensure that they are also being receptive to our overtures for importance of that part of the project. And if anything else, I'll, I'll continue to provide updates if we get further along on that. I did want to say, as of, I think it was today, hopefully the, the council, I'll, I'll give a, an update on behalf of RJ. As we don't have a sanitary district meeting, but we did receive our bond rating as a sanitary district. And also those certificates of participation were put out, I think, as of actually today, late, late this afternoon. So they're been out for like a bid essentially at this point or ready to be purchased by somebody out there. So that is moving along. And at this, that, that's really the two main updates. I will still, obviously at the last update, I was hoping that we would have a discussion about the intergenerational center. This meeting wasn't ready for, for that discussion. So hopefully by the next meeting, we'll have that discussion on the council agenda. And that's.
What was the bond rating, by the way?
It was AA minus.
Okay.
But in any case, if you read through the actual documents, it's, it's a good, it's a good read because it talks about how they evaluated the district. So. In any case, that's all I have to report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll do council reports, Fred.
Yeah, I attended our VPA meeting there. We approved a new, sorry, gas powered ambulance. Just let everybody know, ambulance is running about five hundred and twenty five thousand or so. I guess the cost of those have gone way up also. Attended Marin Transit board meeting. And then just the last thing I want to thank everybody, the Lions Car Show was last Saturday. Prior to the biggest and best one yet, hundred and twenty cars picking the pickle was there. Thank you very much, Damon. So it was a great success. Central Marine also sent a couple of patrol officers and CHP sent somebody also. So it was just, it was a great event. So, and I appreciate the town also with them pitching and helping with all the assistance. Thanks.
Thank you, Charles.
Yeah, so I have a few updates from the chamber. The, there's going to be on October seventh at six thirty PM in Town Hall, a candidate forum for the elections sponsored by the chamber. The Chamber Golf Tournament is scheduled for October twenty eighth at the Marin Country Club. There's the Angel Island Tiburon Ferry Sunset Cruise scheduled for September twenty third at five thirty PM for Southern Marin Chamber members to celebrate. And please visit the Corder Madera Chamber website for more information on all these events. There you go.
Thank you, Rosa.
Okay, mine is short. So I attended on August twenty fifth, the event at the rec center honoring our ninety and hundred year old citizens, which was really fun. We have a citizen who's actually one hundred and three years old and she's just amazing, looks great. And also I attended the Lions Car Show, which was really fun.
Thank you, Pat.
Uh, yes.
So I did attend my first healthy teens meeting in about, has it been ten years since it started? Yeah, I think it was. It actually, the Healthy Teens Coalition started because my children were big partiers and there was a huge backlash. And so ever since then, Bob and others have worked on this committee. And I was amazed to see how much they are doing now. They are doing so much more. They're involved in, in legislation. They're working with the police. They were one of the ones who encouraged Governor Newsom to come down on the high THC hemp products. And he answered the call. And so they really are going against the kids, the people who are marketing to children with these bright colors and fun flavors and really toxic products. So that was really gratifying to see that going on. And then we're also, as many of you know, working on Oktoberfest planning. Former Mayor Charles Lee will be running the costume contest. We encourage everyone to wear their leader hosen and dirndles. And we're looking for an assignment for Eli. He kind of shut down the chicken dance. So we are looking for a judge of the chicken dance if someone wants to do that. And we're doing a pie baking contest this year and a cakewalk where you'll be able to win cakes or little cakes all day long. A beer garden. And if you go to cormadera lions dot com, you can get ten dollars off your ticket, buy it ahead for forty bucks. And we'll see everybody on October fifth.
Awesome.
You be there? You want to jump?
Thank you.
Chicken dance?
All right. All right. Just, just a few from me. On August twenty first, I was in Sacramento with the Cal City's North Bay Division doing our lobby day. We met with Assembly Member Damon Connolly and Senate President Pro Tem Mike McGuire about a number of bills that they were sponsoring. On August twenty fifth, I also participated in the age friendly Corder Madera onoration for our non-agenarians and centenarians, which was fantastic. August thirtieth, we had a Rome ribbon cutting. I think we're all five of us there? A lot of us were there. Yeah, I think a number of us were there. Okay, not all five of us were there, but it was great. On September seventh, Lions Car Shows, huge success. Congratulations to Fred and all the Lions who helped make that happen. And then on September eleventh, I spoke, I was a keynote speaker at the BPI Summit in Berkeley. And I talked about Corder Madera's reusable footwear ordinance and sort of our process, how we, how we landed, where we landed on that and what the roadblocks remaining are to really, I think, solving that issue. And that is all I've got to report.
Thanks. If I can, Mayor Beckman, one more quick one. We issued the certificate of occupancy for the Evergreen Hotel. Twenty-two rooms right off of Tamil Pious. It's a soft opening right now. They're going to schedule something. I'll make sure all the council members have the details on when they actually do a ribbon cutting.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. With that, are there any comments on the draft agenda for the next meeting? And if not, we are adjourned.